To them, there are no children. By the time house number four was finished, we needed to get a water pressure booster pump for our house because just those four houses made enough difference because they were lower, they had gravity helping their water pressure. My washing machine did not feel completely when I wanted to do a load of wash. The residential units in the station project are 163. That is one-third more than the number of rooms in the Gettysburg Hotel. When this building is finished and the residential units are filled, hopefully they will be, or hopefully the developer thinks they would be, that is a water pressure draw one and a half times higher than the Gettysburg Hotel, which sits up higher, is drawing. You have people getting ready for work in the morning, you have everybody coming home from work, cooking dinner, washing dishes, doing their laundry, washing their dishwasher. At the same time, the residents, the restaurants in downtown Gettysburg are in their peak hours and entering the time the hotel is starting to do all of its laundry. Just think carefully the impact that this building will have on the water pressure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment?
I didn't know these.
Yeah, we got those.
Good evening. My name is Tom Pauls. I live at 26 Highland View Lane in Amelbrook. I am not a resident of Gettysburg itself, but I feel like I am by moving here from Florida about five months ago, even though we were born and raised in Washington. You see, I used to ski Char Nita back in the 60s, but that's a whole nother story. Just have a couple of questions. I am a retired professional planner, AICP. I was the director of planning for the city of Frederick for three years, 1988-83, under Ron Young. The reason I'm here is I want to ask, are there any discretionary applications that are part of this project? Or are all the applications submitted so far and expected to be submitted all by right?
Well, so a couple of things. First off, the comment period is not designed to be Q and A.
Oh, just for comments only?
So if you have questions or comments, we'll try to get to them later.
Okay.
But I will say for the station project, I mean, this, there's, the developer purchased the parcel and is, you know, going forward with their plan. There wasn't like a request for proposals for it, if that makes sense. It's...
Okay. I'm kind of new to the Pennsylvania planning provisions and how it's applied. But I would think that if the application was submitted, there would be an opportunity for the public to take a look at the proposals and the provisions and the designs and all the other things, for example, traffic impact, stormwater management access.
Right, so yeah, I'll get, when we get to new business for the station, I'm going to go a little bit over kind of where we're at in the process.
Would that be a more appropriate time to talk?
And what our role of planning commission is in the process.
We have an opportunity to comment at that point or later on?
Typically, we do allow for informal comments during our discussion within reason, as long as it's manageable.
Sure, okay.
So there is a potential there to make a comment or a question as well. We'll try to work through it as a group.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Any additional comment? Okay, great. So thank you, everyone. So again, we'll have another opportunity for comment at the end of the session as well. So we've no tabled old business, so we'll move on to new business. So first up is, I think, what a lot of people, it sounds like, are here for is SLD 250003, or the Gettysburg Station, 108 North Stratton. So at this point, as a reminder for folks, this has been going on for, gosh, well over a year now. But really, something I want to stress for these folks is really what the role of the planning commission is. So back in, I believe, 2018 was it, when an ordinance was passed for the revitalization district? So back in 2018, the Borough Council took a look at the area where the station is and what it was zoned for, and approved the current zoning, which is the revitalization district, including incentives for additional height, among other things. And that was passed, and this developer brought forward some informal plans to the zoning hearing board to talk through the approvals they would need to allow for the additional height, among some other exceptions as well. And that was passed by the zoning hearing board last year, I think it was last year, two years ago. Thanks, John. So at this stage, the planning commission's responsibility is to review the land development plan that was submitted last month to this board, to this commission. And what we're really trying to do is making sure that the land development plan as submitted follows the rules of the zone that the station project is in. And so I think there's obviously a lot of feelings around kind of the form and function of this building in terms of how tall it might be, setbacks, everything like that. But again, I apologize about communication, but I just want to be clear, the planning commission is really here to make sure that that plan fits what is currently proposed and what is currently in our zoning laws. And so we don't have a lot of wiggle room in sense of, you know, we're not really at a point to deny or even try to talk through kind of anything that's been previously approved for this project. And so I think there's a lot of conversation around both, you know, the form of the building, how tall it is, things like that, as well as what the exterior would look like. That is not the responsibility of this planning commission. And so we're really going to try to focus our comments on everything that we're responsible for. And again, we'll invite some discussion as well, but I just want everyone to keep that in mind, that there's, you know, there's a distinct task that we have, and it doesn't encompass kind of a yes-no on this project, you know? We're really just reviewing the land development plan. So with that in mind, I think to get started, do we want to go through, I think Chad's comments probably from the Borough Engineer, and then maybe the Adams County, the county comments as well?
Yes, that's what staff would recommend. Chad's comments, by and large, are the bulk of comments. We'll be able to go through the remainder pretty quickly. At the conclusion of tonight, though, staff is hoping to be able to provide any additional concerns from the planning commission to the developer. It's our understanding in communicating with the developer, who wish to be here this evening but is unable to, that they are going to be seeking to extend the request, and that will most likely be occurring at the June 16 meeting, at which time we'll have an opportunity to have a technical review meeting with the development team on all of the issues that have been established to date. So the final plan itself is not going to be something quickly completed, but we will be working with the developer to make sure that all the concerns from the planning commission and all of the additional regulatory issues are identified. So I'm just going to give everything over to Chad.
Thanks, John.
Good evening, commission. So let me start by saying, and just to kind of echo what John was saying there, this plan will be on our agenda for several months, not two, probably more like six. They have to do an MPDS permit. They haven't submitted that yet. That process takes about six months. That's an outside agency review by the County Conservation District. It needs to get reviewed by the Gettysburg Municipal Authority. So we don't review, there was a public comment about sewer and water, good comment about water pressure, we don't review that. That goes to the Gettysburg Municipal Authority. They have their engineer, they provide those comments. I'll make sure I relay that concern to them about the water pressure and make sure that that's being looked at. But at the end of the day, we just wait for their approval on sewer and water. There's also a public comment about traffic impact studies. I've got a two-page letter on that on this third cycle of the, of the traffic review. Traffic impact study goes through, they start with a scoping phase, which we talked about two years ago. Then they've gone through one round, one cycle of comments. They're on a second round, cycle of comments with PennDOT right now. PennDOT will have to approve those things. So there's, again, an outside agency review. So just kind of wanted to paint the picture real broadly, that we're not going to get through all of this today. I have a six-page letter, not counting stormwater management, not counting traffic impact. We're not going to get through, we'll be here till midnight just to get through all the things in my letter. So what I've done is to try to help us through tonight is I've made a list of things, and I emailed this to the developer last week, copied John on this, to just try to get a, a lot of these comments that I have are technical in nature. The things that I'm going to be working out with their surveyors, they're just typo, I'm going to call them typos, but they're things that are wrong on the plans that they're going to have to fix, that they'll easily be able to fix. But there are some things that you guys could potentially weigh in on, so I'll just try to get through them as quickly as I can, because again, I don't want to be here at midnight tonight, but we'll try to do the best we can to make sure we're thorough with our review without dwelling on some of these details that we can handle with the developer outside of this meeting, so.
Yeah, sorry, Joe. Real quick, and just for the folks here, I do want to just remind us of the process typically is, they submit a land development plan, we accept that plan to, for review, and then it starts a 90-day clock. But often, and we've done this with many of these land developments, the back and forth goes longer than that, and there's a mutually agreed upon extension made to that development plan. So last meeting was when we first, or our last formal meeting a month ago was when we officially accepted this plan for review. To Chad's point, this is kind of a back and forth period now, so I agree, we're not looking to pass or not pass this plan today, and we will likely be working with them through the three-month timer and then potentially a mutually agreed upon extension of that timer. So hopefully people kind of understand that, you know, there might be a concern that you have, but we might not get to it tonight, but we will get to it kind of eventually. We'll make sure all of the, you know, i's are dotted, t's are crossed, everything is good and fits the zoning as it is now. So yeah, thank you, Chad, for that reminder.
And that's a good point. The MPC governs that 90-day requirement, but developer did say already that he was going to grant an extension. And again, I won't be surprised if, if we get through this by the end of the year, I think that'll be doing good. Just kind of get it, painting the picture to get you an idea that this isn't going to be a once and done type of thing, so. So the first comment on my letter is, and I'm going to pull in the solicitor on this one a little bit, but it's with regards to the title of the plan, it's called a preliminary plan, and the MPC does allow for a process where they can, the developer can file a preliminary plan before it goes to the final plan. That allows them to build some of the public or common improvements. What I mean by public or common improvements is improvements required by ordinance. In a 100-lot development, that would make sense, you know, Jay Meyers, Berquentin, something like that, where they need to build roads and public sewer systems and stuff. In this case, most of those improvements are private. Some public improvements, like landscaping, stormwater management, keeping in mind that stormwater management, most of that lot is already existing impervious, so the new stormwater management is only for 25% of that lot. So there's not a ton there. Again, there's some, there is some public and common improvements, but it's not like it's a 100-lot subdivision. So I'm not really sure if there's a huge advantage to the developer in going that preliminary versus final. And one of my concerns with, with that is because there is existing, I believe it's five total lots, not counting the alleys. They've got to vacate some alleys and then combine all of these lots before they build any of the new buildings. And if they build a new building across a property line, then you have a zoning violation, obviously. So we want those lot lines extinguished essentially before they would start building. Now, there is a provision in the ordinance that does say that they can just not do any building with the preliminary plan and still get all their common improvements, but I was, I was getting stuck on that a little bit, so I did email the solicitor here, so maybe I'll turn that over to Adam and see if he has a, any opinions on this being filed as a preliminary plan or just a preliminary slash final plan.
You don't have to turn it over to me. Yeah, I mean, so they, they, the developer filed it as a preliminary plan, which is really what your ordinance contemplates that they do. There are provisions in your SADO, your subdivision land development ordinance, for this to be considered a preliminary slash final plan, which doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to review it any quicker. I mean, it has to still meet all the requirements of your ordinance, but under the SADO, it says at the discretion of the commission, the commission may grant combined preliminary slash final plan approval if, two things, first, the preliminary plan submission also meets all the requirements of a final plan submission, makes sense, and two, the commission determines that there are no significant outstanding matters regarding the plan. I don't know if you're in a position to make that determination quite yet. I think that probably will become a little bit clearer to you as you move through this, you know, whether this checks all the boxes for the preliminary plan, which it'll have to do before you approve it, and in doing that, whether you determine that it also checks all the boxes for your final plan requirements. In terms of lot lines, I'm curious, have you encountered this before? I'm wondering if, we see this all the time out in townships where, you know, there's lot consolidations and lot additions, which don't always happen. And oftentimes what people do is they say, well, this is the deed by which I'm going to consolidate these lots. Has this encountered much in the borough?
Not many times in the borough. We have exactly what we're describing. And mostly, like in the townships, what we try to do now is we write into the ordinance is that, that, there's a chicken and egg thing, because you can't record the new deed until the subdivision's approved. So you can't have a new deed created for it, it's got to be a draft deed, and then you've got to go on their word that they're actually going to go and get that recorded and get that conveyed, so that the subdivision doesn't technically happen until the conveyance happens. So what we've been trying to do is at least get that draft deed in front of us, and then typically if the developer, the subdivider, goes to the effort of hiring an attorney or abstractor to create the deed, then they usually take the last step of getting it recorded. But, but yeah, it happens a lot in townships. I don't know that it's happened in the borough, really, just we don't have many properties that get developed, for that simple fact.
I mean, you folks can obviously do what you want with this, but my sense is it's a little premature to decide this at this moment in time. And I think you may want to not make any decision on it at all until maybe the applicant, I say applicant, until the developer would request it. And then you can maybe decide amongst yourselves, does this actually check what it needs to check for both forms of plan that you can review it all at one time? Or does it not necessarily, you know, meet those criteria slash does it not make sense? Because it is a discretionary exercise on your part, you don't have to do that. There may be some reasons to do it, that Chad can probably get into relative to, you know, developers' agreement and whatnot, but I don't know that you need to decide that right now, is my sense.
Yeah, it sounds like we'll kind of continue to work with them on this plan, you know, continue to give our comments, continue to receive correction, corrected versions.
Yeah, we'll see what they...
And once we get to a more, either final final or final preliminary, we can take a look at that point and kind of talk more about this question of preliminary versus final.
Adam, the one that comes to mind is the middle school, and that wasn't too long ago. Within 10 years ago, I believe, that was constructed. That had, I think, 11 lots or something like that, different tracks, small little tracks. And I'm pretty sure what they did, the school district decided to do is do a consolidation first, separate from the land development, just got it all on one tract and got it all cleaned up and a new lot recorded, and then it filed the land development plan separately. I feel like that's what they did in that case, but in that case, they owned all of those things. This, it makes this, this is a little bit more complicated because you have the Rabbit Transit lot, you know, I mean, that's part of this lot consolidation, so I don't even know how that would, how that would work exactly, but, John, did you have a thought with that?
I was just going to point out that the consolidation of the middle school property doesn't necessarily work very well in practice because you have multiple, multiple unrelated structures all in one parcel now. I don't know if it was necessarily reconfigured properly, but we would be able to at least get the subdivision aspects wrapped before necessarily the funding, the, the work associated with establishing the developer agreement and everything associated with that.
Okay, good enough for that. So next is number five. There was some issues with the corners at the terminus of Strickhauser Alley, and I just wanted to mention that, and the reason I wanted to bring that to your attention is because there are two alleys with this subdivision, Strickhauser and Foth. Some people call it Foth, some people call it Foth Alley, I've always called it Foth. The Strickhauser, sorry, the Foth Alley is definitely to be vacated, that's clear on all of the plans. The Strickhauser one is a little bit confusing. One plan says that, that it is to be partially vacated, the other one doesn't say that. So that is one of the questions that I've brought to the developer's attention, we're going to clean that up. But I did want to mention that to you guys, just so that you're aware that those two alleys are going to go away. At the end of the day, what I anticipate is that we're going to do something like we did, similar to what we did with the High Street Brews, there was an alley next to that where the borough just simply quits their claim to it. Harry drafted up some documents for that, so that'd be a fairly easy process, that we can quit our claim to these alleys, and then the developer would essentially claim that, that land as part of their own and add it to the lot consolidation, so. And there's two, the terminus of Strickhauser, the way my comments were to there, there's, there's some corners where the property line along the railroad tracks isn't a straight line, it actually breaks there. So it would have to have some property corners and a separate meets and bounds for that little description there, so. Any questions about the alleys, they're, they're being vacated, is the bottom line.
Yeah, the, was there something, though, with, we would look for some type of agreement or an easement to allow snowplows to...
Yes, yes, yep. And further into some of my comments, there's not only that, but there's some utilities in those locations, too, so it's going to have to be some easements for, for those utilities. And then if you look at, and I'll be touching on this a little bit later, too, but there's, at the end of Strickhauser, if they vacated that, right now what the dumpster does is they pick up the dumpster at Monahans and they use Foth Alley to get out. Now, if Foth goes away, that's going to be hard for that truck to just be, have to stop there and back out. So they're going to have to be able to get through. So there's going to have to be an easement, not only the trash truck, but also our snowplows. You know, so there will have to be some type of an arrangement, even if they are vacating that, that they're going to provide some type of an easement right of way. I don't know what that's going to look like just yet, but I did make a comment on that as well. Thank you. So number nine is, oh, yeah, that's the same thing about the Strickhauser Alley being vacated. It's kind of two different comments, two different things that are issues with it, but that's again about those easements. I wanted to stop on number 12. The development, and I don't know if, John, if, do you have the development plans handy if you wanted to pull them up while I'm talking about this, but the, so the land development plans show that they're going to be restriping at least, or reconstructing some of the rear of Scap's parking lot. And at the rear of where the bus transfer center is being moved to, there's a connection to that property. It's kind of a stone parking lot right there now, and people can just drive through, people drive through all the time, but there's a fence being proposed that crosses the property line. So that's something that I, that I pointed out, and I'm slightly concerned about, I'm just not really exactly sure what they're looking to do there. So when John gets this plan pulled up, if you scroll to your right a little bit, John, you'll see, yeah, right in that location, so you can see that where Hazel Alley keeps going south, and then there's a fence where those, where you go out from the rear of where the bus transfer is going to go into Scap's parking lot. And that fence, as you can see, crosses the property line. So part of that fence would be on Scap's property and part of it would be on, on the Gettysburg State, or I guess it would be Rabbit Transit's property. I don't know whose fence that would be to own and maintain, if it's supposed to be open all the time, or is it just for emergency purpose? I'm not sure exactly how that's going to work, so. I brought that, brought that up, a comment, concern, I'm not really sure what the solution is, or if I have any direction at this point, but until we hear from the developer, but I just wanted to mention that I am, it's confusing to me, so. Any questions about that? Number 14 is the next comment I wanted to talk about, and we do have some, some lighting standards in our ordinance, and the biggest thing that we look at when we're looking at lighting is trespass glare. So they do have a lighting plan in here where they have that IE file, that little zeros and ones on it all over the place, and there are some, some, some lights that's spilling over onto the properties to the north of this. I'm less concerned on the south side is the railroad tracks and the parking garage, it's the properties to the north of this that I'm the most concerned about. So I asked the property, or the developer, to look into that a little bit and determine if there's any trespass glare on the neighbors there that could cause an issue, so. Questions about lighting? And again, until we hear, hear back from the developer how they plan on shield those, I mean, they can do a lot of things with the shielding of lighting, so. Number 17 is about the landscaping plan. I've asked for some more details to, to get into, to understand the plan a little bit better. There's a lot with landscaping. I had, I don't know, a full page worth of things with landscaping. They have five waivers of landscaping. Obviously, what exists, from what exists to what they're proposing is way better. The county planning actually said that they're happy with the amount of landscaping that's being presented, but they're nowhere close to meeting the ordinance standards. Our ordinance standards are pretty tough, and I don't see that they're ever going. So there, there's, I believe, four or five waivers. One, two, three, four, five waivers that they're asking for, all with regards to landscaping. So I don't know how far into the weeds you want to get into with that. I did make one note that where their access drive coming off of Stratton is, there's what looks to be planer boxes, but there's nothing in it, it's a little bit confusing to me. So I asked for some more information detail on that. Aside from that, there's, there's just a pile of, of things to talk about with landscaping, so. I mean, do you have any, do you want to get into the weeds with that? No, not the weeds, it's bad pun.
He's here all night.
Do you want to get into the specifics with the landscaping now, or do you want to wait till the developer has a chance to, to look into all of my comments?
Let's hedge our bets. Sorry.
I think, from my perspective and other planning commission members, feel free to chime in, I think at this point it might be helpful for the developer if we give some indication of, you know, how we're at with what they're proposing versus what the ordinance is saying, and if we kind of really want them to work towards getting closer to what the ordinance is saying. I wouldn't necessarily feel the need tonight to vote on these waivers that they're requesting with kind of two of our members not being here. And again, this being the first of several meetings we will have about this property, so we have plenty of other opportunities to kind of give a definitive yes or no. So I think if people have individual comments about landscaping, I think definitely we'd want to hear them now, and that way they can get reported back to the developer to kind of give an idea of what we're paying attention to. But if other people are okay with that, I wouldn't suggest that we go ahead and vote on any of these waivers at the moment.
And I would echo that, because I think you're gonna, you want to tackle that all at once, and I think this is going to change a number of times in some form or fashion, so.
And I can give you a couple of, just off the cuff comments here to paint the picture really broadly. There is an underground parking garage here, so they can't plant any big trees on top of that. That's got to be hedges, you know, it's got to be something smaller that isn't going to grow down into the, to the, to the parking garage. There's a little bit of a stormwater plant, so you can see that John pulled the plan up there for us, but around that northern side, that's like a stormwater facility there. And so they are putting a significant amount of plants in that area, but that's, that's really where most of the plants are going to go. And then the one other thing that I, I mean, I had my landscape architect take a look at this as well, and says, is there anywhere where they can get more planning units out of this? And he was really struggling. He's like, man, they're trying to, they're doing everything they can, there's really not a whole lot of places where they can put it outside of where they did, because, again, you can't, the, the small things, the hedges are, a planning unit is one major, two minor, five bushes are like 100 square feet of, of flowers. So you don't get very much out of the, all of those little things, is the bottom line. You get the most bang for the buck out of the trees, and they need like 300 planning units or something like that in order to be able to comply with the ordinance. So the only other thing that he pointed out to me is that it seemed like they weren't not complying with our ordinance in terms of street trees along Carlisle Street. There are trees there now in front of Rabbit Transit, and they're removing those, and they're not putting any new ones in. So I think that's an easy win for them to be able to put some new trees out along Carlisle Street. So that would be something that we would definitely recommend. Aside from maybe two trees at the most, at least one on Carlisle Street, maybe two. Aside from that, we couldn't find a lot of locations where you could add like a full tree.
One of, one of my thoughts on this matter, and I was, you know, my first, my gut reaction was to be fairly unsympathetic to the variant, or the request for waivers, I guess not waivers, what are they?
Waivers, yeah.
They're waivers for the landscaping, because they're providing, is it 69 more parking spaces than required by our ordinance? And to me, that seems like, I mean, I'm already, I already think it's kind of unfortunate to have that much surface parking in that lot, when I think we sort of imagine that it might be more developed as far as the, that lot. So to have that much surface parking, to me, is already kind of a disappointment. And so then, to say that there's not space for the landscaping one, I think you could eliminate, you know, we're not requiring 120 parking spaces, I'm sorry, we do, we require 120, and they're putting in 189. So I feel like I would like to know why they can't find the place to put trees when they can find, and they're making room for that much parking.
Well, the good example was, a couple of years ago now, but we reviewed the new tour center when they redid their building up on Steinware, and they had a lot of parking. And I mean, they, to your point, we worked with them and, you know, we came to a compromise, but they did remove parking spaces.
Right.
To meet our ordinance. I mean, this ordinance was not recently passed, this was, you know, the tree requirement was what it was when they purchased this property and when they submitted this plan. And so, again, I'm, I'm kind of, not to be, not sympathetic at all, and we have worked with other developers for other land development plans, and we have granted... and we have granted waivers before, so I'm not saying we won't. But I would echo your statement that, I mean, this isn't news about this landscape requirement. And so, you know, when you say that there's not much they can do, that's with the proposed building and the proposed parking spaces, so.
Yeah, yeah, good point. Yeah, sure, the number of plants required is because of the parking space and building size. So if you, smaller parking, smaller building size, and less planting units, right, so that does kind of go together.
I would just note that it won't take away all the waivers though, as there are, they're claiming an issue with the ability to have planting units in the garage.
Yeah, I think when I was looking at it, what I sort of, I also sort of was looking at what Chad was mentioning, how a lot of it seems to be clustered on the north side of the, of that larger building, which in some ways does seem like that might be beneficial to the neighborhood on that side. But I was also thinking that it seems like landscaping along the railroad tracks, or maybe some kind of landscaping separating parking areas or vehicular areas from the Gettysburg interloop, or something, you know, more landscaping around there I thought would be a place that I would imagine it would have some public benefit. But yeah.
I have quite a few comments and a bold change proposal. I wanted to share before, but with all the Sunshine Act stuff, you know, you gotta wait, so here we are. And yeah, it is, they landscaped it to the fullest degree. The problem is what's not pavement in building, you know, has been filled with landscaping, so there's just not enough. Our ordinance is really difficult, so what I'm hoping is that we can potentially make some changes here. My big one would be, so the street that they're proposing connecting Stratton to Carlisle is currently an 11-foot, 11-foot, and then they've got 18-foot parking spot on there. And so you pull into the parking. One of the problems I think with that is potentially a car parking would potentially pull into the bike path. I have a sort of crappy picture, my printer wasn't working, but if you wanna pass that down and look, that's the bike path over at the garage, Tom Knox Garage there. And you can see vehicles pulled over the bike paths, so there might be a little bit of a safety concern with pole and parking. And so what I really imagine, what I daydream about is creating a sort of Elm Street. You know, we have the Elm Street overlay district, no Elm Street in Gettysburg, but there are some newer Elm-type trees available to plant. What I would do is design it, design the street like the street right outside of my house, Long Lane. That is an 11-foot, 11-foot, and then 10, 10 feet, 9 feet, I believe.
Parallel parking, is there any?
Parallel parking.
It's eight. It's some places seven, seven or eight usually, yeah.
So if you did that, you would of course eliminate the pole and parking, which is 24 spaces. I imagine you'd have that, you could probably get in half as many, 12, so it would be a loss of 12 spaces. But I'm curious if the developer would make that change. That would give them a nice wide strip, an eight-foot wide strip along the bike path in which you could plant lots of trees. If you did them, you know, 20 feet on center, you have 564 feet from corner to corner. That's a lot of trees that you could get in, and you could do a true Elm Street, which I think would be nice.
Can I just say, I really appreciate that comment. I didn't even think about it when I was doing my review. What Marty's saying is a legit issue with people parking up against a sidewalk or a trail, especially if you think about a pickup truck. You know, it's backing into a parking space. It can sit over top of the sidewalk five feet or so, take up half the sidewalk. So it is a legitimate concern, so I appreciate that.
I would echo just, Marty, I would agree. I mean, I think generally my comments would echo Sarah's and Marty's that if they can reach out to the developer and say, look, like, you know, I think we're finding it hard to believe the need for all of the waivers with so much additional parking over the minimums required by the ordinance. And so I think Marty's idea to lose some parking on the south side, but gain some more just beautification effect as well as additional units to get them to their landscaping total, I would totally be in favor of.
Well, thank you, thank you. I wasn't sure how it would go over with everybody, but.
I thought you were gonna go something wilder, the way you preambleled that.
It's pretty wild. I mean, you know, that's a lot of grading changes, stormwater changes. I don't, we'll see. I mean, it's, I do have other things to say, but that's the big one. I echo the street scape enhancement. We're losing two Zelkova's on Carlisle. And then there's two really raggedy Bradfords on Stratton, which didn't get listed on the to be removed, but they are there. And I don't know, Chad, if, you know, you did some great work there on North Washington with the stormwater pits and, or the planting.
Tree boxes, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. How's that going? I mean, I know that.
They're gonna be done in a couple of months here, so. No trees in the boxes yet, but the trees are in, the curbs are going in as we speak.
Yeah, and, you know, I think that's incredible design work on your part and a really new thing that we are trying out. I was wondering if that might work on Stratton Street per se. I know they're digging that thing up like crazy with all the sewer laterals and whatnots. Maybe that's an option to try and get some, something stormwater related, or both tree and stormwater related. And then that whole center island, landscape island there. I guess I'm just a little skeptical of, you know, it's surrounded by a curb. And so I'm wondering what the depth of soil is there. It's, you know, it's on a concrete deck. And how does, how does it drain? Is it irrigated? How do things grow in it? You know, what's the soil profile? And I think you had that in one of your comments, you'd like a cross-section there. And, you know, I'm open to, with my, with my big proposal there of the parallel parking street design, I'd be okay with losing those end islands if that would help them out. If you're not gonna put a tree, and I don't see any use really for them, so I would be okay with that. But I don't know how the rest of the commission feels. So yeah, I know this was prepared by a real landscape architect. I looked it up. This, ours, Glen Vehi, female-owned business, and seems legit, so I'm sure that's good. It does, it does seem rather impressive. There were the two errant tree lilac trees. You noticed one right in the road there, but, you know, you get the intention there where they're gonna be located.
Yeah, that was a clear typo.
Yeah, yeah. But back to the tree lilacs, so we, you know, I like all trees, but we've noticed a few problems with these. We did have one die last year. And they look great, especially right now when they're about to bloom. And usually by late July, they're really haggard looking. But there is a question about them potentially being invasive. I've never seen one in the wild, but I suppose that's a concern. I think they only have four proposed, but they're all located on the street.
Was that lilac?
Yeah, they're SRS, Syringa reticulata, tree lilac. We have a lot of them planted. They're a very small tree, I'd say, too, not very imposing.
So maybe suggest something different is I guess what you're getting at, if they'd be.
Yeah, I'd go with like a river birch. I think like, honestly, like either, there's really great three-stem if you wanted to do something more. You know, you get three coming out instead of just the one. You could do a central one. River birch survives pretty much everything. I mean, I've seen them planted on tops of buildings down in Arlington. Whenever you look up on one of those buildings, they always got a river birch planted in there, so, you know. They survive most anything, the harshest conditions. And and then I'm wondering about this split rail fence with wire mesh detail and where that is located.
So that's a, that's a great question.
Is that along the bike path?
Well, let me point out two things to you. First of all, John, if you can go where that little stormwater basin is, where all the plantings were on that kind of the north side, that is like a two-foot deep little pond in where all those plantings are there. Not that one there, keep going over to, over a little bit further with your curtain, no, 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 with your cursor. Keep going over to the other way, not that one, that one, yeah. That's about two feet deep. And I have a feeling that those articulated rock block walls that they're proposing are around that. Because it's less than 30 inches high, so it's considered a garden wall kind of. It doesn't really require a structural engineer and those kind of things. That's what I think that's for. But I do wanna point out something else. If you go to the northern side of where the parking garage is, all of those shrubs along that side, it's hard to tell from the plans, but that's actually 19 feet high at that location. So those shrubs, yes, because the way that you come in, so you come in, along Stratton Street, there's gonna be these three-story apartment buildings, right, kind of like row homes there. And then you're gonna come in, you're gonna be going downwards a little bit off of Stratton Street, but behind those three-story buildings, they're only gonna be like two stories high from the back. So the parking garage comes up, and that wall is about 19 feet high there. And anything they propose is a curb along that wall, obviously, that can't stand, that's something that they're gonna have to correct. It's gonna have to be something more than just a six-inch curb along that northern side. At the top of our parking garage, there's a big block brick wall structure to keep cars from flying off the edge, you know. So it's gonna have to be something like that. But along that side, you know, the trees that are gonna go along that side, there's, you know, not a whole lot of space. We do have some ordinance requirements about buffer and plant, putting plantings in those locations. And as we know, the sun's at the equator on the south of us, so the north side of any big building is nothing but shade. So people like Marty would know that plants don't survive very well on the north side that close to a 19-foot-high wall. So I did wanna point that out to you too. We brought that to our attention, so they're gonna have to take a look at that. Very minimum, get some shade tolerant species in there. But very best, try to give us more space along that northern wall and give us something a little bit better. But I did wanna make you, make that aware, you aware of that concern that we have.
Yeah, there's a few, what are they called? Hornbeams, ironwood, they're in that little area between the garage. I don't know if anybody knows what area I'm talking about. There's like this really tight area that has some trees in there, so I'm not too concerned.
And they grow, yeah, yeah, they grow in there.
I think there might have been a dead one. I don't know if that's been removed or not, but yeah, that's a tough site there with the stormwater, too. I'm not sure if I understand any of the stormwater stuff. That one pipe in the, I don't know if this is, how does this work?
So that, the water's going, the water's flowing to your right and then into the basin. It's flowing that way, yep, and then flowing in, and then filling up the basin, and then it spills over that inlet right beside where it came in. No, not that way. Not that way, no, not that way. It's spilling over to the inlet, right where you, yeah, that one. And it's going out that way, yeah. There's a whole separate system that discharges the other way. So it's kind of two different systems.
Going underneath the building there?
Yeah, that pipe there is flowing from left to right.
Is there a reason why they would need such a tall, going back to your concern about the fence there, the 19-foot fence? Like, obviously I understand maybe wanting a fence between, you know, the property that's not yours and, but that's, I would think you'd have like a six-foot fence, and then the trees are what?
It's the elevation of the parking garage structure.
Oh, okay.
It's not a fence. Right now they've only proposed a six-inch-high curb, which obviously, like I said, we can't, we can't allow. It's the parking garage structure itself.
So not that entire?
Yeah, from the existing elevation of the neighboring property to the top of that parking garage is close to 19 feet.
I'm sorry, I was missing that, that it's connected.
So if they add a wall on it, which is what they're gonna have to do at the top to stop cars, some type of a vehicle protection is gonna go even more than 19 feet. It's gonna go up to 24 feet or something like that.
Oftentimes when you have a structure, it will make something grow more vertically. So it might actually encourage the plants to grow a little taller. I don't know what our screening height is.
But they also keep in mind, you were asking about that pipe, so there's a stormwater pipe that goes in there too. So you can't put a big tree on top of a stormwater pipe. It's gonna have to be a smaller hedge or a shrub.
Yeah.
That's gonna be a tough, a tricky spot.
What is the depth of that pipe compared to?
It's not super deep, because it has to drain to Stratton Street. It connects to the pipes out in Stratton Street, which isn't super deep. It's gonna be five, six feet deep at the invert, so the top of the pipe might only be three feet deep.
That's, that's pretty deep.
I mean, it's enough for a shrub, but it's not enough for, you know, a 30-foot-high tree.
Sure.
Chad, is that going to be like a French drain type of piping, or is it?
I don't think that pipe there should not be. That pipe should be solid. Some of the other pipes may be to collect some water, but that one should be solid at that point because of the discharge.
Okay, so one of the comments that, one of the issues we've had with some other developments is related to bonding, especially as it relates to plants being able to succeed. But then thinking about how this landscaping is going to impact stormwater management and how those roots could destroy that system. No easy choices.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, they might clog it, but, you know, the whole point of stormwater management is to slow the rate down. So you're slowing the rate down until it might, you know, overflow. So on that one stormwater system, where does it finally exit, the big one, the long-term storage?
That, there's another pipe that goes into Foth. If you go over, John, to the other big system that, and then right up there, or not, yeah, Strickhauser Alley.
Yeah, where does that one exit?
So that system there has a separate connection that I believe ultimately, and keep in mind, I haven't taken, I haven't looked at the stormwater yet. There's a whole separate process for the stormwater, so I believe that system is intended to connect to the pipe that goes out Foth. And I could be wrong about that. I could not find the connection. They have that other, John's showing you right there, there's a filter system that comes into that same basin. But I don't believe the intent is to take all of that underground storage to that same basin, that same. I think that is intended to go west at that point and then go north on Strickhauser Alley. Because there, again, there is a pipe that goes north on Strickhauser Alley. It actually comes under the railroad tracks first, and then it continues north on Strickhauser Alley. So I believe their intent is to connect to that. They just don't show that connection.
So yeah, the split rail fence, I hope I'm okay with my time here. I think it's proposed along the bike path, and I think it's proposed on the bike path side of the shrubs. I could be wrong. I'm not really sure about this, but it looks like there's some kind of fencing where the crosswalks are. I could be wrong. I'm not really sure about this, but it looks like there's some kind of fencing where the crosswalks are. Right in here, right there, these little dots. I think that might be the fence. I don't know. There's one there and then there's one down here, but it's just that little bit. And that fence, I, I would prefer to be on the other side of the shrubs. Um, you know, so we get to appreciate them, especially if it's a split rail fence with metal wire mesh. Doesn't sound like a nice, uh, fence to me, but I don't know.
It's a good idea.
Particularly like, it's the bike, it's not like just a walkway that's there. It's like the bike path that was agreed upon and which I would agree is supposed to be more nice looking. I mean, I guess it doesn't technically have to be, but I'm with you on that one.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, uh, I, I could be wrong. I don't know if that's the fence, um, but.
That's a good comment. I'll certainly bring that to their attention.
And, um, yeah, that's, that's the majority. Sorry, I hope I didn't take too long with that.
Yeah, thank you for that. That's great information. I just, gives me a lot there. I got a bunch of things that I can take back to them and start thinking that through then. And I'm sure they'll be open to, to amending some things where they, well, convince them to do the parallel parking with the Elm Street thing. Uh, we'll see. But I'll give it a shot.
Again, I think our general message, too, would be, uh, uh, not understanding this idea that there's nothing more they can do with landscaping while being, how many, sixty-something units over the parking minimums with, I might add, an entire parking garage right next to their property. So I understand needing parking for your residents, but certainly for commercial, I struggle to see the need for that many spaces when people can easily park right in the garage and cross right over, so.
Right. Somewhat, somewhat self-created, self-created, right? Okay.
Tree is worth its weight in gold, especially a large tree. And, I mean, the, the biggest trees they have are, I'd say, the white pines proposed on the north side. And I'm not sure anybody really gets to enjoy that, um, area except for maybe some of the residents. So it'd be nice to, uh, um, you know, have some big trees out here, uh, that, that, they have honey locust. It's a decent-sized tree, but, um.
The perky ones. Is that black locust?
That's black locust. Honey locust. We have a bunch around the borough. They're, they're particularly good at heaving sidewalks. We, uh, we cut down two this year, one on Baltimore Street and one on, uh, North Stratton, so.
I think we'll definitely continue the landscaping conversation for, you know, probably a few more meetings, I would imagine. Um, but, so thanks, Marty and other folks for chiming in. Chad, do you want to continue with some of your comments?
So I circled number nineteen, but that was about Gettysburg Municipal Authority ultimately needing approval. So I did mention that earlier. Um, I circled number twenty-one. That's about the developer's agreement, and that goes back to the preliminary versus the final plan. We do have requirements for developer's agreement. So once we get a final approval from you guys or conditional approval, then that developer's agreement has to go to the council for approval. So I did want to make sh- make mention that there are some council approvals that'll still need to happen with this, the vacation of the alley, the developer's agreement, financial security, um, even the stormwater management, once that goes through the Gettysburg Stormwater Authority, um, they'll make a recommendation to approve it, and then the, uh, stormwater agreement will still have to go to the council. So I did want to mention that the council will have a role in the approval of this development. Number twenty-two is with regards to um, the traffic impact study. I did mention earlier that we've been in the process for almost nearly two years now. And I did want to get into a couple of the specifics with the traffic. And we are gonna be having additional meetings with the developer in PennDOT coming up over the next couple of weeks. Um, but I did want to mention two things. Um, for one thing, this came up in the, um, the scoping review of this. One of the ideas was to not allow left turns on the North Stratton. So when you're coming out of the development to the east, you can't turn left and go on North Stratton. Uh, this development plan has a no-left-turn sign there on it, as if they're not allowing that turning movement. And that came up because some of the property owners that live, the residents that live in that Stratton Street area, it's a residential area. They didn't want commercial traffic going left there. We didn't say the same thing for the, for the vehicles, um, exiting the parking garage. John, maybe you can circle the area where vehicles exit the parking garage. It's to your right, keep going to your right, a little bit more to your right, and then north. Now go north now. It's right there. That's the exit. So that, from the underneath side of the parking garage, that's really only intended for, um, some, I, I would call it residential parking. It's for the people that live, the tenants that live in those buildings. That's where they'll be exiting. Those people would still be able to turn left. But from the commercial access drive, which is, go back down south then, John, that's the, the, right there. So there is a sign right beside that stop bar that says no-left-turn. Um, I wanted to mention that to you. Their traffic study doesn't show that. So they have some inconsistency in their traffic study that they're gonna have to work out there. Um, that means all of the traffic will have to turn right and go to the Stratton Street stoplight at Route Thirty on York Street. Um, so that's something that, that we're working out. The other big ticket item is that what they have to do is they have to project the traffic out to twenty thirty-one. Um, five years from the date of the construction. So the date of construction is essentially they're planning for next year, and then five years out is twenty thirty-one. The square doesn't work traffic-wise. It's barely works now, as you know, especially in the tourist season. And it's not the peak hour traffic. It's the Saturday traffic that's really affecting, as we know, this is more about tourist traffic than it is, um, the commuters. On Saturday, um, the, the, the numbers, I'll just give you an idea here, because I want to be as transparent as I can with this. Oh, wait, I put it in here. So the delay times go from thirty-nine point nine seconds all the way up to a hundred and twenty-nine seconds. Um, so it's a pretty significant increase in the delay. But that is largely because of the base and not because of this development. So that's the big ticket item that I wanted to make sure that I'm relaying tonight. There are, and I relate it to the developer. I put together a little, um, spreadsheet. There is five developments on the north side of Gettysburg that we don't have a whole lot of control over, Strabane Township and Cumberland Township and even north. Most of that delay is because of those other developments. It's not because of this development. This, out of that increase, only twelve seconds of it was from this, from this development. Very small portion of this. So I would suggest that it's kind of not fair to Gettysburg Borough if, if a development was not allowed to happen, because if PennDOT says this development can't happen because you can't create that delay. And that's, that's one of their standards, is they're gonna, they're gonna say, okay, what are you gonna do to fix the, the traffic on the square? And there isn't really any fix, by the way. The only solution to a traffic signal, circle, is to make it a true roundabout where you have double lanes. And there's just not enough space for double lanes. All right, it's not feasible. We all know that. Um, so could PennDOT say, well, then you can't do the development? And then we would have to argue that, well, should Cumberland or Strabane not be able to their, do their developments? Why, why is Gettysburg the one that stuck? We're our only developable, developable parcel. And, and we can't have any development, but the other townships and borough a- around us can, right? So that's gonna be the, that's gonna be the discussion. There's gonna be a lot of discussion on the impact to the square. That's the one, the one. All of the rest of the traffic signals don't have any significant issues with this development. Uh, they took a look at all the traffic signals on Route Thirty and on Carlisle Street. Uh, we do have some comments on some of the things they need to fix, fix a few, a few things, but nothing significant like, like that's happening at the square. So that's gonna be a major topic of discussion as we move forward. Um, just to give you another, some other numbers there that, that was going with that. Um, Gettysburg Station, total trips for the whole station was two hundred and thirteen. Um, the trips at the square from all the other developments, nine, three hundred and ninety-three. So not quite double, but almost double from the other developments compared to the Gettysburg Station at peak hours. And again, that's the Saturday. Um, so it's something that, that the, ultimately, the developers, the, the person that are gonna have to convince PennDOT that it's okay, and the borough. Um, it's not my job to convince you guys and, and PennDOT that it's gonna be okay. But I did want to bring that to your attention, that we are looking at har- hard at that traffic impact study to see what kind of impacts can, are, are gonna be seen by this development, try to mitigate as much as we can to, to make sure that we're not sending traffic through residential areas. And one other thing that I wanted to mention is, I brought to their attention that back in the day, and I don't really know a whole lot of the history of this, but I know that there was a camera mounted on top of the Gettysburg Hotel, that whenever the traffic sig- the, the, the square would get um, just logged with traffic and it can't, nobody can get out, it would make all of the greens out. So all of the four corner, or all the four roads around the square have a traffic signal. And they would turn green heading out. So it would, you know, if it would be a traffic jam at the square, it would kind of relieve that. I don't know the status of that traffic sig- or that, that, that camera. From what I understand, it doesn't work anymore. And it hasn't worked for a long time. So that's one of the things that we could maybe make the re- the developer, okay? One of the things you could do is look into this, upgrade this camera, put together a system that would try to relieve the square. So I'm not gonna necessarily say that there's nothing you can do, like a two-lanes round, roundabout. Obviously, that's not feasible. But maybe there are some things like smart, smart signal timing, um, some things that they could potentially do, so. So that's kind of traffic in a nutshell there. Do you have any thoughts about that before I move on?
I mean, I think this certainly, we, we received, I know Sue, your, one of your comments is about the traffic impact study. I think we'd be interested. So can you just go, it's not completed. It will be completed at some point in the near future. At that point, would PennDOT give a recommendation? Like, what is, what hap- what is PennDOT's ultimate thing when they're completing this traffic study? Is it also include a recommendation, kind of a yes or no, or?
So, yeah, uh, not just a recommendation. It'll be an approval or a denial. And it's in the form of a, of a highway occupancy permit, because they gotta connect to Carlisle Street.
I see. Okay.
So they have a pretty he- pretty heavy hammer, and they can just basically say no to the, to the connection of Carlisle Street if they really wanted to. Now, aside from that, um, PennDOT has been really great with working with local municipalities lately. Um, that hasn't always been the case, you know, whenever I first started in engineering, that wasn't necessarily the case. But nowadays, I haven't seen them approve any traffic impact study without the local municipality providing a recommendation. So without you guys' recommendation that you're okay with the traffic, they probably won't approve it.
I guess, so then my question, what's the vehicle, though, or the mechanism? So vehicle, really in the puns of this stuff, like, if, um, at a certain point, it is complete, wh- what is that kind of middle period where we can see kind of this finished traffic impact study, give our recommendation, and then PennDOT takes into account our recommendation for their approval, I guess would be my question.
Yes. So we, we kind of ha- we being me, I, I've been looking at that for, for two years. Um, I do have a two-page letter. You guys are gonna get my letter on this. We can have a more discussion about that next month. I haven't sent this yet. Um, for this next round. You've seen my comments for the first two rounds. Um, my first two, two rounds talked about that left turnout on Stratton, and they talked about the, um, how the, how the traffic sig- uh, I'm sorry, the roundabout in, in Gettysburg is being impacted. Also talked about Lauter Street, um, traffic signal a little bit. I don't know if you can remember that conversation. But those were the three things. You guys have the traffic impact study. It's, it's been submitted to the borough. It's over a thousand pages. It's, it'll put you to sleep.
I guess it, then, if everyone's all right with this, it might be helpful then potentially focusing, like, giving you time, more time to finish your letter, kind of to us with your overview of, as a professional, of this thousand-page study. And then that'll give the public and the planning commission members some time to kind of respond to that and have some thoughts for the next meeting on, I think it's June sixteenth, I wanna say. Uh, yeah, Monday, June sixteenth. And then that can be kind of when we really hopefully get to a point where we're feeling comfortable with where they're at with the traffic study and are feeling like we would be in favor of the idea, and then PennDOT can be aware of that. Or if we have additional questions at that point, or additional concerns or suggestions, we could also send those back. Because I, I guess if we have suggestions, you would relay those to the developer. That would be put into the traffic study, and then that would ultimately go to PennDOT for approval at that point. Okay.
Yeah, and, and at that time, too, we can hear what the developer, what, what their thoughts are to my, some of my comments. Because like I said, the no-left-out turn, um, shows up on this land development plan, which was prepared by their civil engineer. Their traffic engineer is a different guy, right? So the traffic engineer had, didn't have the same thing on his plan. So they gotta work that out, figure out exactly how it's gonna look. Um, I brought to their attention about this, this, um, this camera. So I'll put them in touch with Robbie to see if they can, um, talk about that a little bit, but see what their thoughts on this. Again, ultimately, it's, it's not our job to design this. It's their job to convince everybody that, that this is gonna work. So having, hearing from them is, is one of the next steps as well, so. But, yeah, I like your path forward.
Any, I mean, open to comments, though, from other planning wish members?
Okay, so number twenty-four, I circled, that is, oh, about some overhead electric lines. I don't need to get into the weeds with this right now, but, um, on Strickhauser Alley, there is overhead electric. Um, I know we don't necessarily love overhead electric lines. We would love to bury them, but that one's gonna be an issue. I can't imagine they're gonna be able to build the building that close to those overhead electric lines. So they're gonna need to do something different with it. Uh, maybe we can get them to bury it, get rid of some overhead electric lines. There is gonna be a piece of that alley that remind, remains, and there's gonna be other utilities and easements in those kind of areas. So I wanted to mention that to you. I don't think we need to really get into the specifics at this time, though. Um, number, and there, oh, by the way, I didn't see any other proposed overhead electric coming down, like, along the bike path. So that was one of the nice things that I did notice. I didn't want to, to kind of point that out to you. Uh, number twenty-five, I circled, that is about dumpsters. Um, they didn't really show exactly where they're planning on putting the dumpsters on this project, unless I missed it somewhere, John.
No, that was a comment I had as well. Um, in the proposal, the revised proposal, they've identified that all of the, I guess, dumpster trash receptacles are gonna be on the internals of the structure, um, and then providing the ability for a truck to access. Oh, where did I put that?
As John's looking for that, obviously, that's something in our ordinance is we require screenings. You know, that's one of those, again, aesthetics, landscaping-type thing.
Yeah, where was it? I believe it was this connection back here. But, yeah, so that's something that's already been identified with the developer.
Okay. So I guess for now, we don't, we'll get into the specifics until we hear from them exactly how they want to do that.
Yeah, I think generally, we'd be in favor of shielding dumpsters, so just having some specificity about that would be good.
Um, talked about the utilities. Landscaping, trees. I made a comment about signage, and John, I'm hoping to defer to you ultimately to, on that. They didn't really show a whole lot, but once they do show all of the details for how they plan on signing things, um, obviously, there'll be a whole signage review. I did want to bring your attention that, that that's gonna have to go through the process, and we just haven't gotten into it yet. Um, we did have some comments about the handicap parking spaces. Um, as Marty mentioned, the handicap parking spaces are proposed at eighteen feet. Our ordinance says twenty feet. So that is gonna be something that they're gonna have to struggle with, uh, they're gonna have to figure out. The county also made the same comment, so it's not something that you can just overlook.
And that, that's something they were able to fix with the revisions. It, it's two feet of paint.
Yep, it's just paint, is that essentially. Um. I mentioned, um, that stormwater management's gonna have to go to the stormwater authority. Um, I also made a comment in here, John, about, in my stormwater comments, and this is just kind of more of an administrative thing that, and we'll have to get Deborah English involved, because I'll have to revise their, um, their record of impervious on the property. I think the record, the, the actual impervious is gonna go down with the, with the new development. And then, um, I made some comments about the street, the borough's street ordinance. Uh, we do have a separate ordinance for the street ordinance. They're doing a lot of cuts into Stratton Street and that, how they're gonna have to overlay the whole thing. They're gonna have to get an HOP, um, from Robbie on that as well. And, um, and then again, I mentioned about the easements for the snow plowing. Had some comments under my general number six about the mo- modular retaining wall and that fence that Marty was talking about. So we kind of already covered that. And the fact that that wall on the north side is nineteen feet high. And then I made some things. 19 feet high. And then I made some things, just to try to help this along. I made some, circled, so a lot of my comments were, some of them, I try not to make my comments redundant with the counties as much as I can. So I did point out a couple of things about the Adams County Office of Planning and Development's letter. One is that the fire chief review needs to be done. So that'll, that'll happen. I haven't seen anything yet from the fire chief of you, John, yet on that.
Well, my understanding is that the fire department is reviewing projects a little bit differently now, especially after, I believe Courtney Meadow kind of kickstarted that. So that, that's something we're going to be checking in on to get those comments. I'm not sure what quality of comment we're going to get though. My understanding is that the applicant has coordinated though to make sure they get the turning radiuses for trucks, so.
And it seems that it's, it's going to work. I, I think that what they have here is going to work, but they're going to have to get approval from the, from the fire chief, simple as that. And then obviously they're also going to have to work with the building code requirements for, with GMA to make sure that they have enough pressure in there for putting out a fire if the building catches on fire. The next comment is kind of related to that. The county mentioned electric vehicle fires. And, and a few weeks from now, I'm going to be going to a wedding in Jacksonville, Florida. And in the news, there was just this huge fire that was all these electric vehicles in a parking garage in Jacksonville and they couldn't get them out. So I'm sure, unless, if you've heard anything about electric vehicles in parking garages, that's a concern. So the county brought that to, to the developer's attention. So they're going to have to address how they plan on handling a vehicle fire in the parking garage if, if an electrical vehicle's in there. So I don't know what the answer to that question is. I just know that it's been brought up to the county and I think it is a legitimate question that developers are going to have to wrestle with.
Well, the county suggests that the borough, so some type of, I think they mentioned in the SADO, some type of requirements or something. Because I don't think we mentioned electric vehicles specifically, right?
Right. Yeah, I don't know that we have a, a standard that says they shall provide X, Y, Z, but we do have standards that says that we need approval from, from the fire department.
Okay.
And if the fire department's saying that we're concerned about this, and we're saying that they're concerned about this, then they need to address it.
Yeah. And county's comment is really couched in the language of future applications and future submissions.
Right. They made a comment about SRTA approval, that's rapid transit's, I'm not even sure what SRTA stands, southern.
Susquehanna region.
Susquehanna region, that's it, yeah. So I'm not sure where they stand. Do you know, John, where they stand on, on their approval of the new transit center?
No, and that's something I wanted to ask the planning commission. The county makes the recommendation that we, that the applicant or the project should have comment from the transit authority regarding this project. Given the zoning hearing board's decision related to the extended building height, it would probably be beneficial for the record to at least include that information, but it's not something that our ordinance requires. But I wanted to see if that's something it's okay, if, if the planning commission would like us to investigate that a little more.
I mean, I think generally this plan involves moving the, whatever that thing is called, the.
Transit.
Transit center, thank you. And so, sure, I would agree that it'd be nice to just confirm that, you know, Susquehanna Transit Authority is good with that as well.
It, it's been under understanding and working with the developer that they do have, not necessarily a full plan for what that development would look like, but that they're, that that project is going to be rapid transits.
And with that, they've, they've mentioned two things, the, the connection to Hazel Alley there, where I was talking about that fence. And they also mentioned the, the public restroom topic on the approval from the zoning hearing. So I'm not sure what the, the answer to either of those things are yet.
Yeah, the, the bathroom one, I will say, is a concern, like, having public bathrooms is part of their waiver for their approval from the zoning hearing board. But it is a little odd. It seems like, you know, they're building the transit station for rapid transit, that's where public bathrooms are. But then at that point, this developer no longer has any control over rapid transit. And so like if the day after rapid transit just says, we're closing these to the public, you know, what does that look like for the borough? And what, what recourse do we have there, I guess would be my question.
This is probably, Adam, I mean, this is probably something we're going to need to get a concrete decision. Our concern naturally, it's our understanding that rapid transit does not necessarily want the bathrooms. There is clearly a liability with having bathrooms and we're not giving them any money for them. So that's an unfunded mandated third party by, for a land use decision. I don't know how that would actually work within the context of the Commonwealth law regarding zoning hearing board decisions. So we will work to get some additional information on that.
Yeah, I was also thinking about the, the restrooms. I feel like they're not, that wouldn't be as desirable of a location if we, if they were over on Stratton Street. For me, to me, it seems preferable that they would remain off of Carlisle, where there's more public activity, or currently at least. So I don't, you know, in our ordinance or in the, the zoning hearing decision, how it's worked, I would love to know if there's any possibility that the developer, if they propose to include public restrooms, but, but on their site somewhere near Carlisle where they currently exist, would that be a way of, I guess, meeting, I mean, if the transit doesn't want to have the restrooms, developers want to put them over there, we still get them for the public somewhere? But would we have to go through the whole zoning waiver request again?
Well, again, we, staff wants to make sure it wasn't something illusory, that the zoning hearing board established something that is not ever going to be feasible, would never be required upon the property owner. We definitely want to see bathrooms there. So that's something we can, we'll bring to the developer to make sure there's a way to get the, at a minimum, the thrust of the zoning hearing board decision that I, that improvement created. Yeah, I think we still need to establish what that zoning hearing board is requiring, that decision, what that's requiring for the developer today.
And I think a big part, big part of that conversation, so John alluded to the fact that if it was the rapid transits, they don't necessarily want these to own and maintain in the future. What if they, on day two, they decide they don't want to do that? That same question can happen, you know, if you put on their site, is the, are they then to be permanently maintained, staffed by the developer, or is it to be turned over to the borough to be maintained and staffed and those kind of things? So that's part of the question too.
Do we want to, I mean, I'm just looking at the clock. I know, John, you had some comments as well.
Most of my comments have been addressed.
Chad, did you have additional?
There was only one last one that I mentioned, I wanted to mention that, that the county letter did say in quote unquotes, "A supportive of the development proposed for this setting is appropriate." So I did want to mention that they kind of ended their letter with that. But that, so yeah, that, that concludes my comments.
And the, and, and I mean, from my perspective for this meeting, again, just a reminder, we're going to have plenty of time to talk about this. I think this is the largest comment, set of comments we've received in, I mean, my time on planning, which has not been that long, but there's a lot of comments. And I think too, giving the developer some benefit as well, I think a lot of these are easily addressable. Certainly like the dumpsters, one comes to mind where it, I don't think would be that hard for them to then say, okay, yeah, sorry, we're here at the dumpsters. So I think just for the, I just for the public's awareness, this is again, a process. You know, they will be receiving these comments, they will have a chance to respond to these comments and either fix and correct things or, you know, respond with any rationale for why things need to stay the same way from their perspective. And so, again, I want to make sure that we have some time to talk about our second agenda item as well. So I'd invite kind of any final comments for now to say to the developer and then suggest we kind of move to the next agenda item. Are there any final comments from planning commission members?
I had a couple of questions.
Yeah.
One was just for clarification and kind of memory, but we initially, I might get this, see if I got this correct. We recommended approval of a variance to the zoning hearing board, which I thought they did approve, which was for a variance to the setback lines on the north side. I just wanted to confirm that they are not currently proposing a building that uses that. Is that right? They have actually pushed their footprint northward and are no longer using that variance?
That's, that's the way I understand it, yeah. It has that, they could build right up to the, like, within five feet of the property line essentially. And then at 45 feet, then it has to go to that 30-foot step back. And then they can go up another story and then has to go to a 45 degree, is that whole thing. They're, they're, essentially their whole building is much further away from that property line. That's where their stormwater facilities are. The only thing that's close to that is that 19-foot-high parking garage now at this point, so.
Okay, I guess I thought from the plan that they, they do not mention that variance being used, but maybe I just missed it somewhere.
I think, I think you're right though. I think you're, I think you're accurate that they're not using it.
Oh, they're not using it, okay. So that, the massing has changed somewhat.
I can double check.
Okay. And the other question I had was, I mean, I think you, you mentioned this maybe in the planning office letter and Sue mentioned in her comments about having the zoning hearing board's decision on the plan and.
The county mentioned that too.
Yeah, the county mentioned, yeah, the county mentioned that. On the page, gosh, sorry, the page is just so hard to, five of 33 of their plan where it has that bulk requirement table. And then, you know, where it talks about their height and variances required and things like that. Down at the bottom where it explains the height, it says, subject to Part 19 Streetscape Overlay District, mixed-use standards 27, 15, W2. So isn't that not the right, it's not the Streetscape Overlay, shouldn't it be the general supplemental regulations about the extended height? Isn't that where that ended up going? And then it, because then after that, it says they're meeting at least 25% of parking is internal, complies, and then B, the transit center relocation complies.
Yeah.
So it's referencing two things that they're doing to meet the extended height. And then my other point was that, so not only, I think they referenced the wrong part of the ordinance, that my recollection is that the zoning hearing board approved the extended height for relocation of the transit center with public bathrooms and the development of the Gettysburg inner loop. Wasn't that the other? I thought the zoning hearing board did not conclude that they met the internal parking requirements based on it not being
I have to go back through that.
Inside a building or something. I thought, I don't remember their, their logic, but I just wanted to make sure the two, I mean, obviously the inner loop is in there, but I wanted to make sure that was their reason for the extended height in case, I don't know, something else happens. I want that, make sure the inner loop.
So yeah, what we can do is we can, we'll confirm the bulk requirements being in compliance with what's actually, what was decided by zoning hearing board, but then also, yeah, establish, yeah, yes, with regards to the parking requirements and the decision as well.
So if I understand your question right, is they needed two things.
Yeah.
Yes.
They essentially kind of have three. They have the move to the transit center, the inner loop and a parking garage. Which of those two are they using?
Right. And I, because I think, I thought the zoning hearing board concluded they only got two of them.
And maybe the park, and maybe the parking garage is not the one.
I think the parking was not the one. I think it was the inner loop and the transit center.
We, we will confirm.
Got it.
Thanks.
Yeah, the zoning hearing board decided something unusual. They wanted a deciduous screen on the north side, which means it loses its leaves. I don't know why they decided that. Currently, the plan shows what you would normally do, which is an evergreen screen. So I don't know if we want to follow what the zoning hearing board has said there on, on what kind of screen is to be used.
Forgot a non in there maybe.
Well, it's, it's, I mean, maybe they could clarify. I don't, I don't know what the solution is there. But it does, I believe it does say deciduous, not evergreen, which is.
Marty's right, usually you use evergreens for the obvious reason, that it's a screen 12 months of the year and not just six months of the year.
That's all I had.
Yeah, I think so. There's some general confirmation of what the zoning hearing board passed as well as, I mean, and the county was looking for some clarity on that as well, you know, what, to make sure they're doing what the zoning hearing board decided on the plans reflected somewhere. Okay, so we appreciate there was some public comment as well. And I know a few big ones, right? Looking more at the traffic study next month, waiting for the, the GMA review, the municipal authority review of the water, all of that stuff to make sure that's good. I think they're still doing that review. And then I think there's one more. Am I missing a public comment? And, oh, and again, more clarity on the zoning hearing board discussion. So I think we, we will hopefully address those. Again, continuous process, first chance for comments, but we will continue to take more and talk about this through, again, at least our next few meetings. Okay, so second aspect of all business. So that is the 100 Beaufort Avenue. And what we're trying to do here is a recommendation to the zoning hearing board regarding a request for a special exemption to permit a convenience store land use at 100 Beaufort Avenue, which is currently zoned R1, single-family residential. So I, again, just to kind of, for everyone here, this is a formal application process to the zoning hearing board, which we are not the zoning hearing board, we are the planning commission. But typically, we provide a recommendation and kind of our opinion and thoughts on that review, but the review is ultimately up to the zoning hearing board. So I think I would definitely invite discussion. We appreciate the comments already made in this. So I think at this point, John, do you want to give a general overview of the application and then we can comment?
Yes, this is in regards to 100 Beaufort Avenue, zoning hearing board case 250002. It involves a mixed-use commercial-type dwelling, not dwelling, mixed-use commercial. There is residential on the second floor, I believe, but it's in the R1 low-density residential district. So there is a non-conformity that's occurring. The application, one of the, I guess, in working with the applicant, we were able to establish that the request is for a convenience store. Initially, the application materials made reference to retail sales establishment. The current zoning ordinance does not necessarily get into the tobacco, vape store uses that the proposed ordinance has. Those types of uses would fall under retail sales establishment as they're not offering a line of groceries. That's what really creates the convenience store land use in our current ordinance. So that's something to think about. The, with regards to the special exception, there's a provision in the ordinance that allows for non-conforming uses. So it's already, it was legally a, I believe last, a beauty salon, hair, barber shop, personnel services. That was, that's non-conforming in the R1 district. The, the provision allows for a change for a similar type of, I guess, it uses, it uses the term, oh, where is it? Basically, the idea is that you're able to have restrictive uses. So you're allowed to have a non-conforming restrictive use, but you can't have a use that's less restrictive than what's already on site. Of course, our ordinance does not define what that concept means. So it's up to the zoning hearing board to make that determination in this case, because it isn't necessarily a clean-cut line. With regards to recent permitting, onsite, there are approximately five commercial spaces. We have licensing for some of these spaces. It becomes really incomplete during COVID. This space though, most likely, yes, it was the pet groomer and then it became a barber shop. We were able to find in 1988, a zoning hearing board case for the property. At that time, the property was zoned a type of general commercial. So the commercial aspect of the building, that's most likely what was established. That case in 1988 dealt with off-street parking requirements. They wanted to have fewer spaces than required. It was approved with a number of conditions, which in the, almost 40 years, I don't think they're all still in effect. So that could So that could be weighted. I'm not sure necessarily that everyone's generally aware of this location. Most of the existing business spaces are occupied by personal services, those low, low-impact offices, things like that. This would be the convenience store, so that's a use that primarily sells routine household goods, groceries and prepared ready-to-eat foods to the general public, but is not primarily a restaurant. It includes a building with a floor area of less than four thousand square feet. That's pretty much completes everything I have. The expectation for the special exception is provided. If there are any specific questions, we can provide that information, although as zoning officer, I'm very limited in providing a recommendation.
Any initial thoughts from members of the planning commission?
It used to be the bike shop.
Bike shop?
Bike.
Bike shop.
Yeah.
Bike shop, yeah. And the applicant is not here tonight.
That's correct. They were notified of tonight's meeting and the zoning hearing board meeting on the twenty-eighth.
I just feel like we might need more information as to what they want to do or what they want to sell. I, I don't want to take any action. I don't think we have to, do we?
If you, you're not going to have another miring, meeting before their hearing, so if you don't take any action, it would be assumed that you're making a neutral recommendation by not making a recommendation?
I just don't think there's enough information.
I assume under the ordinance, I'm not familiar with that specific part.
Just make a no recommendation.
Yeah. And, and it is just that, whatever you decide is a true recommendation. It's up to the zoning hearing board to determine whether it meets the criteria.
Yeah, I mean, I, for me, the challenge I saw is, because we've talked about these variances before, and there are, like, legal requirements that the applicant needs to make to... Or is this different because it's special exception? Because this is not currently allowed by special exception?
It, well, it may be allowed. That's that the zoning hearing board needs to establish that it's permissible under the, the non-conforming provisions for a change to a more, an equal or more restrictive use. I believe, yes.
But they haven't provided the hours of operation?
The, that information was not included in the application.
Well, and, because I'm, because technically with a variance, in the past, we've talked about, like, needing to provide some type of hardship, some notice of hardship, why this space cannot be used for what it should be zoned for.
So, so a variance is a very high legal hurdle to clear, because you have to prove a necessary hardship, you have to prove that it's not your fault, you have to prove that there's something unique to the property, and so on. There's a lot of specified criteria. For a special exception, that's another vehicle by which an application ends up before the zoning hearing board. Oftentimes, it's because a use is set up as a special exception to say, you know, you could have a convenience store in this district, in this location, if it meets X, Y, Z standards and such other reasonable conditions as the board may put on them. Here, it's not quite that simple, because it's really a judgment call on the part of the zoning hearing board to determine whether or not what they're proposing is essentially equally or less non-conforming than what's already there. And a lot of that, I think, would probably be fleshed out in the hearing, because if you don't have enough information to determine, you know, when's it going to be open and what's it going to sell specifically, you know, perhaps you're not in a position to make a recommendation to the board. And that's just going to have to be fleshed out at the hearing, you know, by the applicant when they're actually providing testimony to the board, if it's not really memorialized in their application.
That makes sense, thank you.
So it's, it's different than a variance, is the, that was a long-winded way of saying that.
I understood what you were saying.
Can you explain a little bit? I was interested in the public comment regarding the, the wall of display for tobacco products and SIG and tobacco display. And I was thinking about the fact that it does seem, well, you know, I feel like a couple convenient stores in town that I think, to me, years ago felt like convenient stores have sort of transitioned into more tobacco and vape shops. And what does our current ordinance help define a proportion of sales or space dedicated to those kinds of products versus things that I actually consider to be, you know, benefits to a local neighborhood, like having availability to, you know, get groceries really quickly or something like that? Doesn't seem like it does.
It, it doesn't. It's, it was built, the ordinance was built before vaping really became a thing and really has plagued most municipal downtown land uses. That's why we're at reactionary stage now with our current proposed draft to be able to hopefully regulate the use. As it is, the only thing we really have is that this, this first line for convenience stores, that a use that primarily sells routine household goods, groceries, and prepared-ready eat foods to the general public. So if it's like you have a vape store in a, in a, like a Coca-Cola machine, that, that's not going to cut it as a convenience store. But at the same time, if it's, say, seven eleven, we could be looking at their revenues and it's going to be tobacco and alcohol that's pushing all the money through. So, we do have that retail sales establishment use, which even if it were a more vice-centric type of land use, it would still be within that type of category. So that's a use in which merchandise is sold or rented to the general public, but not including, and that gets into adult movie theater, bookstore, manufacturing tavern, car wash, service stations, repair, convenience store, or restaurant. So, if, if, if it is a determination of the zoning hearing board, if they establish that it is not going to be a convenience store, that's something that they will probably discuss. Is it going to completely derail the application? I'm not quite sure. It does naturally provide some questions on the, if the applicant is going to be able to faithfully complete the application or the, what they've determined they're going to do. So, it's something that will have to be fleshed out to the satisfaction of the zoning hearing board.
And they may ask, just for example, you know, what, what degree of floor space do you think is going to be devoted to certain things? I mean, that's often how that's dealt with. Because you can't really project, you know, what percent of sales and all that.
Right.
But, you know, they, and they kind of have that now somewhat.
The other floor space question, and I don't see this on here, but it does seem like it's becoming more common in taking up floor space of what I had considered convenient stores is those gambling booths.
They're skill-based.
Sorry, skill-based, whatever they are.
Technically, right?
Yeah, games of skill. What are they? So like I said, I don't see those on, on here, but it does seem like they're just allowed to be in any convenience store anywhere.
So we do have provisions on those machines. I'm not sure, there seemed to have been a proliferation, especially with the gas stations. Not only those machines, but also even more, not vape material, but things that'd be associated with like a head shop. With this type of land use, it would not be, my understanding is that would not be permitted to have, yeah, to have quote-unquote gambling machines. I would really, I, I, yeah, I mean, that's, that's something where if we're in a, if we have an opportunity to say no to those in that location, we're going to. I'm not quite sure how they were previously permitted when we do have regulations in place.
So I think, I guess, just from our planning commission members, I think it sounds like, obviously, we have three options. We can recommend this be approved by the zoning hearing board, we can recommend that it is not, and we can, as we found out earlier, not recommend anything. I think my personal opinion is, you know, what we always do with these zoning hearing boards is we don't have the discussion with the applicant typically. We're just going off of their application. And there isn't, there's a lot of questions that are not answered by the application that I think you would need to answer to allow for the, to, you know, be approved by the zoning hearing board. And so just based on the application, I personally would say, would recommend we don't recommend it. But I think, I'm kind of looking for a straw poll here in terms of how people are feeling. I'm certainly comfortable with a no recommendation, like you said, Marty, and just kind of let the zoning hearing board figure it out. So I don't know, John, if you're, how you're feeling about that?
I'm in favor of no recommendation.
No recommendation.
Sorry, were you saying, you, you think that we should say the application as submitted should not be approved? Or you just say no recommendation?
I mean, typically, just from looking, thinking about this in the past, we don't always talk to the applicant. So I think if we're getting questions of, if you did not complete the application and show, what we feel questions need to be answered to, to allow us to know that this is not going to be, you know, more abrasive to the community than what's currently there, because we're in this weird kind of non-conforming, existing non-conforming use, a different non-conforming use. In my mind, that means we would, based off the application, say no. But I'm, I completely understand the perspective of, you know, let's let the zoning hearing board kind of hash this out when they can talk to the applicant, so.
I'm okay with no recommendation or do not recommend.
Recommend, yeah.
But I, I'd like to give them the benefit of the doubt and say, you know, no recommendation, just because they're not here. But as presented, it doesn't look good, so.
I guess I'll wait for a motion to be made.
Yeah, I guess, would anyone like to make a motion? And you don't even have to do that. You can, if you don't want to, you can just say, you know, you're not taking any action on it. Although I think you would probably be inclined to make a motion saying you're not, you're not making a recommendation.
Yeah, that's what I prefer to do.
Nick, I'll make the motion that we not recommend in favor or not in favor of the project without further review, and we turn it over to the next board.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? All right, so, thank you. Oh, sorry, John, obviously motioned and Marty seconded. We are not, and apologies to the public that are here. I think, again, there's just a lot of unanswered questions. I know there were some concerns, but I would invite you to attend the zoning hearing board. And can we pass along the comments that were made here to the zoning hearing board, along with our recommendation, to make sure they have them?
So what will happen is, after tonight's meeting, I formulate another memorandum to them based on your decision. What I can do is I can include that there was discussion about the limited material in the application.
Yeah. And I think concern on convenience store definition being primarily for food service and then the floor plan not reflecting that.
I will, yes, I can relay the planning commission's, yeah.
And just for the benefit of those who are here concerned about this, the main action will be at the zoning hearing board meeting, which I believe is May twenty-eighth.
It, it is, and I'll, I'll, I will caution everyone, though, it's, it's not like a traditional democratic meeting.
It is not.
It's, it's almost like a court case, so unless you're an affected party, you're generally just, the only opportunity you have to speak is just in general comment, and that'll be it.
And how do, how does someone make the claim they're an affected party?
They were most likely provided a letter from the borough establishing that they were invited to come to the meetings. We do that to all the abutting property owners. Otherwise, that's something that lawyers usually get involved with.
I'd rather not go there right now. All right, so we have one announcement, that the next planning commission meeting is scheduled for Monday, June sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five, at seven PM in this room. Next up, any additional comments, general comments from planning commission members? Any additional public comment about items that were on the agenda or not? Please, same deal, yeah, please just say your name, where you live, and then your comment.
Monica Ogra, one oh one Springs Avenue. And thank you for making time for public comment at the end and for allowing me to offer a few additional thoughts. I understand why you don't want to make a decision based on a lack of information, but I just want to acknowledge that a neutral decision is not the same as a no recommendation. And so I hope that your minutes will reflect that there was some question about what you were actually trying to say with no recommendation. And I, I, my understanding is that the zoning board members take very seriously the recommendations of this body for and against decisions. I don't know how they interpret neutral decisions. I guess we'll find out. But I appreciate the thoughtful discussion that you had and raising of issues that, some of which I mentioned and others that you brought to the discussion. And I just really hope that all of this goes into the record. And since I'm making a public comment, I'll just say that, from what I learned from your discussion, this is not an application for a retail business, and this is a residentially zoned, on the map, it is residential right now. And a convenience store is not a residential business, nor is a tobacco shop. And it's very clear that whatever their high end, which is all they wrote in there, I think we deserve to know what they're actually planning. So your comment about whether they are going to do this in good faith if they get approved, I think is a really important question, and I hope that there's some way to enforce that if it is approved. So, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, yeah. I was quickly, I think the challenge here typically, if this were zoned residential and the variance was simply to do a convenience store from like a house, I think it would probably have been pretty likely that the zoning hearing board and we would be like, no, I think the trouble here is it's a, it's already a non-conforming use that is a business. And so that's where this kind of question comes into play of just, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to just say, no, it doesn't fit the residential nature, because they have a pre-approved kind of non-conforming use. And so, and I think as well, it's, we, it's important to consider what's in front of the Borough Council soon, which is the current rezoning. And I will say, looking that up, that's currently zoned as NC three. And NC three allows for not vape shops specifically, because we are kind of differentiationing those in the new zoning, but it does allow convenience stores. So I think another recommendation, I would say, is again, if this is something we're all thinking about, is paying attention, going to Borough Council. And, you know, we'll see what the zoning hearing board decides for this specific use for this one building. But I think if there's an interest in preventing kind of future similar uses to be made in that area, particularly converting residential to commercial, I think bringing that to the attention of the Borough Council and your Borough Council representative is extremely important, because as of right now, convenience store, and again, this question of vape versus convenience store, I know it's pretty big for this, but even if you didn't want a convenience store, that would be allowed. And so, I think, again, talking to your Borough Council member, coming to the workshop sessions when they do happen about the rezoning would be, you know, important, because, you know, it's great to hear from people in the neighborhoods that were trying to, to rezone. Sure?
Monica Ogra, one oh one Springs Avenue. I also just wanted to say that part of the reason that I think this matters of what the category is, and I'm well aware of the new proposed zoning, is actually in response to one of your colleagues' comment about how there was a bike shop there once upon a time. And I read in the application that they have a three-year, with a three-year lease, with a plan for three more. So that means for six years possibly, whatever comes in will be there if it's this. And I would love to see a bike shop on that corner. I would love to see a business there that would actually contribute to our community and be a place where people would want to spend time and would want to patronize. And when there was an exercise place, I patronized that place. When there was a dog groomer, I used that place. I never had a haircut at that place, but people did. I mean, it's a hard place to have a business. And in the neighborhood, we're invested in having something of value there. So I would see this as, when I saw high end, I thought, maybe it'll be something healthy and nice. Until I read further. So I guess I just want to say that whatever is, is gumming with the new stuff, this is an opportunity for us to actually revitalize that corner. And I, I don't think, I don't think selling tobacco in a family neighborhood is a compatible or similar use than what's already been there. I don't really totally understand about setting the bar higher or lower. It seems like what you're saying is, if this goes through, then that sort of sets a new bar. And it seems like we're lowering the bar rather than trying to at least keep it where it is, which is quiet, daytime, residentially compatible. And people live above that. There are apartments, people live right next door. There are children that live right next door to that place. I see people on their bikes, kids walking by all the time. Like, I, I think that this zoning board will hear all of this, but they did want to hear from you, I'm sure. And so I understand that you've taken your decision, and I wish I had had an opportunity to say this before you took your vote. But I accept that you made your vote. So I don't know how much of this goes in the record, but I would like for as much of it to be there as possible. Thank you for allowing me the time at the podium.
Any additional public comment?
Tom Paul's, 26 Highland U Lane, Gettysburg. Just as a thought, and maybe this is something that's already been addressed, but if the criteria for the information is needed when a special exception application is filed, is listed clearly, and the applicant understands that things like hours of operation, distribution of use, is some of the fundamental issues that you, as a board, as a commission, would need in order to make an informed decision and a recommendation back to the zoning board, the zoning hearing board, would be helpful. And again, I don't know what those criteria are, but perhaps if they're not in there now, they could be entered into the application form. That, therefore, when you did get the information, that application in the future for similar special exception or other discretionary applications, you'd have the information you need to make a decision back to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional? Yeah? Take a few more, and I'm just keeping these to five minutes, so thank you all for that.
Hi, Alana, I, Alana Anderson, I work at SCAP, which is 153 Stratton Street. This can be an email, so I'll keep it really quick. I'm having a really hard time looking at the schematics and understanding anything, so forgive me for the ignorance. But when you're saying like 19 feet high, like parking garage, that's not the parking garage that exists, it's the parking garage that they're putting in?
Yeah.
Okay, so my suggestion is, there's this awesome place called The Row in LA. It was a clothing manufacturing space, and whenever we shipped all of those jobs overseas, it was empty for a really long time. And they revitalized it by building, rebuilding this parking garage and then putting in all these boutique shops and having this amazing program called Smorgasbord, which is an amazing, like, anyway, look it up. My thing is, something that they did was with this like five-story-high industrial behemoth of a parking garage is they put a living plant wall on the shaded side, because it wasn't going to get any of the, you know, remarkable sunlight. It's ugly, and they needed something to just look attractive. Now, because it was California, there was succulents and moss. It was exceptional. People come to take pictures in front of this wall. It's a huge traffic ad. It's really gorgeous. So I've always looked at Gettysburg thinking like, clearly, parking is a huge issue that we have in the area. If we have these spaces, could we be more creative with putting in shade plants? Like English ivy is, or I don't know if what you call the American version, but there's like a native ivy plant that doesn't need as much sunlight. Climbing celadon, I, that could be wrong too. I don't know, I'm guessing at this point. But there are plants that, like, couldn't we put some kind of structure up along that space that would make it more attractive, would be less of an eyesore, wouldn't be, you know, massively burdensome on weight? So that's my thing. I can send stuff for pictures. Bye.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, there's a project in Arlington, Virginia, the Wendy. It's a half-acre site, and they managed to build a 14-story building with 33 parking spaces, or three, three floors of parking spaces. Anyway, it's, it's a really cool, and it's got affordable housing units, I think over 100, which is incredible. The front's designed like a ship hull. There's great parking spaces, there's tree pits with stormwater. But they also have green walls on the streetscape. So I, I have a picture of that, if anybody's interested in looking at the Wendy, which is, I think, a great project in Arlington.
I think, generally, Chad, it sounds like, and John, if, if we could have some information next meeting, maybe if there's any, how could green walls help a developer get to our landscaping minimums? And I don't know the answer to that. It could be, unfortunately, with the ordinances, the answer's no. But I think having an answer to that would be helpful for this discussion, so. Okay, at this point, I might be looking for a motion to adjourn from someone.
I'll move to adjourn.
No second.
All right, I heard Sarah first, so Marty moved, Sarah seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Really appreciate it.